Oh, sorry. Everybody behave. Okay. Welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. I'd like to call this, uh, this meeting to order. Uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafanti.
Here.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Dudda.
Still here.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley and Mr. Kinst. We have a quorum.
Very good. Um, we will be going into closed session. So, um, in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on July 21st, 2016, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: A. The matters to be discussed are personnel matters and negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association; B. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a roll call?
Um, I'll move if you go to executive session.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Thank you. Now, a great call.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Great.
Any opposed?
Excellent.
Excellent.
All right. We're in executive.
We're in executive session.
Let's go.
Okay, we're back in session now. Uh, may I have another roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafanti.
Here.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Dudda.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley, Mr. Kinst. We have a quorum.
Great. Uh, can everybody rise and pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have received correspondence on a variety of issues. Um, and now it's time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Seck.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Uh, it's my pleasure, uh, tonight to introduce Lorraine Borwick, our supervisor of nurses, who is going to walk us through the annual district summary report on wellness. So with that, I'd like to introduce, uh, Ms. Lorraine Borwick.
Good evening. Um...better? Okay. Uh, Dr. Schiff has these slides and he's going to share them with you.
Thank you. So, the current wellness policy was approved in December 2014 and took effect for the 2015-16 school year. A progress report was provided to the superintendent on June 30th, 2016, and this presentation provides an opportunity for the public to review and comment on this report and meets the requirements set forth in the policy. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present and highlight the progress the district has made in addressing the goals of the wellness policy. The progress was made because of the commitment of the staff and the support of the parents. The goals of the policy are outlined, and these goals identify activities that address nutrition promotion, nutrition education, physical activity, and the coordination of these activities take place, uh, to ensure community involvement and input through the formation of wellness committees at each school. So, the wellness teams were developed and organized by each school nurse. These teams included the school nurse as the facilitator, a PE teacher from each building, a building administrator, a staff member, a representative from food services, two parents, and two students. The wellness team coordinated the celebration of Wellness Week, which took place in March. Each school, um, celebrated Wellness Week by offering free food tastings in the cafeteria. Physical activity was encouraged through special announcements and coordinated physical activity events that week, such as ACES, which is all students exercising simultaneously. At the elementary level, students, uh, usually have snack, and there was a promotion that encouraged students to snack from the food plate, and students were randomly selected to win a prize, which included a free lunch from Sodexo. Additional information regarding nutrition was provided to students. This was done in several ways depending upon the preference of the school. Sometimes it was through morning announcements. Uh, Otten Road had the dietitian there to work with the students during lunchtime in making healthy food choices, and information on how to pack a healthy lunch was shared with parents. There were other accomplishments as well, and this has been a cultural shift taking place within the district. So, food as incentives is discouraged in the elementary schools and actually in all of the schools, and there was an additional shift occurring, whereas cupcakes or food treats to celebrate students' birthdays within the school setting is discouraged. What is encouraged is to have the parent come in and, uh, read a book to the class on that day. The student's birthday is announced during morning announcements, and some schools have the student come to the main office to either receive a book or a pencil, uh, to recognize their birthday. Another accomplishment is during Field Day, um, for elementary schools. Fruit is included as part of the celebration during Field Day, and the sweet treats are really just limited to one item. We've done a lot of out-of-the-box, uh, activities. So, this has been, um, activities that the staff have worked with, uh, the PE teacher, to coordinate opportunities and ways that students could be active on indoor recess day. As you know, in the winter, sometimes the weather is too cold or it's very inclement, and the students end up staying inside for recess for extended periods of time. So, we've offered indoor walking clubs. Uh, we had physical activity breaks during Wellness Week. Uh, Amsterdam had a fun run, which raised $20,000 for the school. They, most of the schools participate in Hoops for Heart, and I say "most of the schools" because it takes place at all of the elementary schools, at Otten Road and at the middle school. And we also explored the option of having students have the capability of opting in for a yoga activity during indoor recess days, and this was, took place at Woods Road. Paige Russo, who's a teacher there, volunteered her time to work with students on those indoor days, and students were offered the option of either having the traditional indoor recess, which is the playing in the classroom and the coloring, or to actually join her for, um, a yoga activity. And it was so positively accepted by the students, uh, where there were times where there were 40 students there crammed into that one space, although it was safe, that they were interested in participating in that activity. So, we've done a lot of these activities because we have health and PE requirements, which are set forth by the state, and it requires 150 minutes of health and PE for students. Now, we meet those requirements at Otten Road, the middle school, and the high school, and it's been a bit challenging to meet those requirements at the elementary level. So, because we recognize that, uh, deficit, we've tried to put in these other activities, such as the walking club, such as yoga during recess, and, uh, to try to meet those, uh, needs for those students, as well as meeting the state regulations. Next slide. And so, the, so the future is, we're not done yet. We still have more work to do. We've gotten a lot done. We've made a lot of progress, but we want to continue to, uh, the good work that we have been doing, so we want to poll students for additional information and input on their suggestions for meal planning, and we've found that by having the students on the wellness committee, they have a lot of wonderful ideas, and they were really an integral part of planning the activities during Wellness Week. We also want to examine and address food placement on the food service and à la carte lines within the cafeteria. We want to review and explore updated breakfast options at the high school. Um, we want to ensure that nutritional information is posted along with the lunch menu, and we want to identify and encourage ways to promote selection of healthy foods for the students. So, um, as we work to promote wellness within our community, the words of Florence Nightingale come to mind, and she said, "It is much cheaper to promote health than it is to maintain people in sickness." So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share this information with you, and I look forward to our continued, uh, growth in this area.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Borwick. We really do appreciate it. Before Ms. Borwick leaves the podium, are there any questions from board members concerning our wellness? Um, seeing none, I have a, I have a, a few wonderful pieces of information to share with the board and the community. Even though it's in the middle of summer, our students and staff members continue to do amazing things during their break. I am pleased to share some great news from around the district with our board members and the community this evening. Graduating senior Nicholas Yarka recently received the Joella Clark Dick's, um, Genius Student Scholarship. This scholarship is awarded to a graduating senior in recognition of their academic and athletic achievements. Nicholas was an integral part of the Hillsborough High School track team, is an active member of the Hillsborough community, and recently earned the rank of Eagle Scout while all maintaining a high GPA. Congratulations to Nicholas. We know you are off to do amazing things. Hillsborough Middle School student Wasif Sami was selected to be part of the Papermill Playhouse prestigious Summer Musical Theater Conservatory for 2016. The Papermill Playhouse Summer Musical Theater Conservatory is a program of rigorous study, allowing students to enhance their individual performance, um, potential, while developing a broad base of theater experience and knowledge. Wasif will be directed and choreographed by Papermill Playhouse's staff in a full, a fully-produced, original concert on the Papermill main stage titled "New Voices 2016: Everything Old Is New Again." The concert is a culmination of a five-week program. Performances will be held this Friday, July 29th at 7:30, and Saturday, July 30th at 1:30 PM and 7:30 PM at the Papermill Playhouse in Milburn. Break a leg this weekend. Wasif. Uh, and I do want to mention to our, our board and the members of the community that are here tonight, I continue to get notifications from, um, that we're having severe weather in the area, so to what extent we, um, uh, we can move ourselves along, I think it would be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving along quickly to the approval of minutes. We have regular session minutes, uh, we have executive session minutes of June 27th to approve. Uh, may I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstentions?
Abstention.
Abstentions, okay. That's on the executive minutes. Um, on the regular meeting minutes of June 27th, may I have a motion and a second, please?
Excuse me.
Yes.
President Haas, I have to abstain. I was not in executive session.
Okay.
I'm out loud.
Okay, we can correct that? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions for the regular minutes?
Abstain.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I was here.
Okay, we move on to the comments from the board, uh, and from the public. Are there any comments from the board or public on the action agenda for tonight?
New business or action?
Any kind of new business? State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jean Trujillo, 5 Eric Court. Um, I'm here because, and I don't know, maybe I should take it to the end, but it's the, um, follow-up from March 14th meeting, when I had, um, come here to ask about the cell tower that's going to, that's proposed for Woods Road School. Not Woods Road School, Woods Road Firehouse, apologize. And, um, Mr. Gillette, you had mentioned that you would take it up at the operations committee, and I hadn't seen anything in the YouTube videos, so I wanted to find, um, I wanted to ask if you had, um, discussed it during your operations committee.
I'm gonna have to, let me think about this for a minute. Um, I don't believe I've reported on this before at, for operations committee, so you're correct about that. I, I don't recall reporting before, um, because I don't believe we had any discussion about it at operations committee. Maybe, uh, Dr. Schiff, if you jog your memory.
I, I don't recall. I remember having a conversation at the dais that there was, that the, that the issue was in front of the Board of Adjustment?
That's correct.
Right.
So, it was the, um, March 14th meeting at the Board of Ed that I had come to speak with you, um, regarding the March 16th meeting at the Board of Adjustments, where they were here, Verizon's application to install a cell tower at Woods Road Firehouse. My issue was that the, um, the only notification that Verizon was required to provide was the 200-feet neighbors and a notice in the paper per the municipal land use law. Um, after that meeting, the March 14th Board of Ed meeting, I actually went to the township meeting, and I requested, you know, because I think you had mentioned that it was a governing issue and so forth. So, I spoke with the mayor, and their response was, um, Verizon did everything according to the law, which is the municipal land use law. There was nothing further that they could do. Um, so my issue is Verizon is asking for a variance where they want to put the cell tower, and it would be 1,400 feet to Woods Road School, whereas the zoning code states that a cell tower may not be any closer than 2,000 feet. However, if you read more carefully with the zoning code, the zoning code actually only refers to, I think it's about seven districts where cell towers are conditionally used. Every other location, such as residential, as the firehouses, is not permitted, use not permitted. So, there's theoretically actually no, there is no distance from a school to the cell tower, but if you read between the lines, that the intent is that it should be 2,000 feet from a school. So, my question to the Board of Ed is, is this something that concerns you, which I think it should, and is that something that the Board of Ed can inform the parents of Woods Road School? Because, I mean, in order-
Oh, I remember the issue. Excuse me, Mr. Superintendent, uh, Dr. Schiff.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Could you just speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, Dr. Schiff. Um, we should make no, we should make no recommendation. We should make no comment. We should have nothing to say about this. It's a legal matter, not for the Board of Education. If we comment, any comment we make as a board will be on the record and be part of any particular litigation that will occur or may not occur, but may occur thereafter. Whether or not we disagree or not disagree, it's irrelevant. We go on the record, it's, it's there for black and white, for an attorney to use.
I, I think that the direct question was about notification of parents and the responsibility.
That's correct.
This is not the governing board that would be responsible to notify community members of changes in zoning variances or other, other building-level, um, responsibilities within the community. I don't know which, and probably my colleagues on the board would know better than I would, is it the, the planning boards or the Board of Adjustment that is responsible for that level of notification, and that is prescribed by law, I would, I would assume, in terms of distance from those affected?
Dr. Schiff, if you, as a, if you as an administration make a notice and send a notice to parents of, you're taking a position, one way or another, you are taking a position. If you're just notifying people at, as parents of, you're interfering with a legal, uh, obligation of Board of Adjustment to do their job. And as I've heard it, they've hired an attorney as an objector. There's probably three to six months of testimony to go on, and who knows how the vote's gonna take, but everything that we say as a body legally will be counted towards whatever litigation may or may not occur. I'm just, even if you notify people, but I have to admit, seriously, Dr. Schiff or President Haas, do you think as any, Acting President, do you think that anybody who's at that school does not know what's going on? It's legitimately understandable that they're upset, that they care, and they'll know about it. I don't think there's anybody in town that doesn't know about this tower.
I, I'm just making the point that I'm not sure that that is the board's responsibility to do so.
No, I know, but I'm trying to explain to the, to the, to the-
Member of the public, right.
That anything we do, anything, Dr. Schiff, is, is an act, overt or covert act?
I understand. So, my, my issue is, there is-
You're not understanding, because you're still asking if we're gonna-
But there's, there is no governing body in Hillsborough that is responsible to notify the parents. The only requirement that Verizon had or that the township had is to notify residents within 200 feet of the project, and that is it. So, the, so the residents, the 22 residents that are by the firehouse, it is their responsibility, or it's, basically the burden falls upon them to notify everybody in the vicinity. That's my, that's my point.
I understand, but do you think there's anybody at the school that doesn't know?
In the beginning, when it, when it was March 16th, there were many people who don't. By now, people do know because the residents have, have taken it on. You've seen the signs out, but the burden is on them. I don't think it's fair. I understand that the Board of Education cannot take a stand on it, but I'm trying to point out that there is no governing body, there's no body in Hillsborough that is responsible. The only responsibility that anybody has is the 200-feet requirement and a notice in the paper. It seems quite unfair when they're asking for the moon. I mean, they're asking for, basically, taking a 2,000-feet variant, 2,000-feet setback requirement and taking it to 1,400 feet. That's, that's my point.
Thank you. One, one just clarification. You, you mentioned that there is a requirement for them to advertise the notice in the local paper as well.
That's correct, and they did do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Schiff, I, I just want to say that, and Acting President Haas recognizes, based on experience as a vice chairman of the board, many times running a meeting of the planning board, a legal body, I think I've got the flavor and the intellect to understand what we can and can't do as a board. And when I'm telling you what I'm telling you, it's not in my opinion. I'm just giving you a fact that if we had a lawyer here, would say it exactly the same thing.
So, can I, can I answer?
Yes.
So, um, after you spoke a bit, then I do remember what the issue was, that, that you brought up about the notification. Um, and we, I, now that I think of it, we did speak, it was not an agenda topic at operations committee being, but we do often speak off-agenda topics. Um, and we just spoke very briefly about it, uh, and I believe that we came to the conclusion that just the same thing that we had said at the public meeting was that it was not in our purview, that, and Dr. Schiff, you may have even recommended that we take, uh, no action and no notice, and basically, we, we, so I didn't write a report on it because we were not, it, nothing changed from the public meeting, that what we stayed, what we stated at the public meeting, that, and I believe what I stayed at the public meeting was that, um, there are other governing bodies in Hillsborough that are responsible-
They have responsibility, right.
-for these, and we don't interfere with, we're not gonna interfere on this end with that.
Right. If we had a matter that was in front of the Board of Adjustments, or if we had a matter that was in front of the planning board, then we would be directly involved with, with that. If there was some type of building or other things that, that were going on, I could, I could understand that type of engagement.
Can I also just put on the record, Acting President Haas, that I admire, and it should be applauded, for picking up this issue and running with it and, and being so, um, fervently excited about protecting the neighborhood, and I don't want you to think I'm taking a position against you. I, I don't. I applaud what you're doing. I think it's great. Let's drop it here. I know, but I- It's not, no, no, it's, it's called the law. No, no, you don't, no, you're, you're saying everybody's, but it's the law, ma'am. It's the law. It's, it's law. It's legalities that have to be underst, you know?
So, let me just say, so at the, at the township meeting, they basically told me it's not, it's municipal land use law, you know, there's nothing they can do. They referred me to Senator Bateman and, um, Assemblyman Jack Tittarelli.
Right.
And I actually went and spoke with, um, Assemblyman Zwicker's office, and so they did take an interest in it, and they're gonna look at it. But, like, they, their hands are tied with the municipal land use law, so it really has to go to that if they're going to change that.
Trust me, I understand it completely.
You know way more than me. I'm just learning. I'm just kinda diving into it right now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, then we proceed to the education agenda.
Do we have, uh, committee reports or no?
Oh, do we have any?
We do have one.
Oh.
I, I'd like to do it now.
Go ahead.
All right, operations committee, we met, um, tonight at 5:30. After we dried off a bit, we had, uh, 10 quick items that we wanted to go through. Uh, first one was the, um, univentilators that are being replaced at HES. They are on schedule. Everything's going well. Um, we're gonna do these fairly quickly. The Hillsborough Middle School parking lot, uh, there are a couple of, um, issues that came up that were unforeseen, things like, uh, the electrical conduit, uh, that's buried under the parking lot, a gas line, but, um, those are, um, minor. It would not affect the schedule. The middle school parking lot is still on schedule. The artificial turf field at the high school, that is on target. Uh, I believe we had a delivery date of the, where I'm gonna call it the carpet, I guess, uh, for August 5th, I believe we heard tonight?
They say carpet.
Carpet, whatever it is, whatever it is. The field, the actual field. Um, August, I think that's what the architect called it tonight, right?
Yes, 15 days.
Yeah. Uh, August 5th, so, so that's all on target. Good. Um, we're going to, um, as part of the project, um, we're gonna, um, the goal, the goalposts, as I stand now, are not anchored in the correct, uh, recommended position. Uh, for a field, they need to be one foot back. We're gonna have to, um, and this is all within, nothing's gonna go over budget. Um, we're gonna have to put new, a new, um, place where they anchor it in the ground, uh, so we're gonna get actually some new goalposts as part of that. Actually, and actually, the new goalposts are the least expensive part of that little, uh, project is actually the labor and making the new anchors into the ground. Uh, but it's all part of the project. It, it's gonna come out great. Uh, Woods Road School, we have a, a partial roof replacement and repair and replacement. Um, there's actually a resolution on tonight's agenda to move money from the Capital Reserve to cover this, and also, we had a bid, which has been, um, we, we have a high bidder, so we're gonna, actually, that's on the agenda also to be approved tonight. A low bidder that came out on top, because they were a low bidder. Let me make sure I say that again. The low bidder. Right, low bidder. Um, Triangle, uh, something exciting at Triangle School and the Media Center Library. Um, the, um, HSA there is going to donate some furniture, a considerable amount of furniture, nice, I think $25,000 worth of furniture. Um, because the, um, this furniture is going to result in reconfiguring an educational space. It has to go through the state, which requires a complete architect plan, so the, um, taxpayers of Hillsborough are gonna donate the architect fees, uh, for that project, which would be about less than a fifth of the cost of the project, or maybe even less than that. Um, so that's gonna, that's gonna be great. It's gonna be ready, I think, for the beginning of the school year. Um, let's see. The, um, there are three buildings in the high school that didn't have adequate alarm systems up to this point, a real alarm system that's tied in with a, um, a monitoring and a network. Uh, that's the, um, high school, high school field house, and Bloomingdale. So, uh, we talked about that. We're gonna get that installed. It's not a lot of money, but it's gonna, um, make a big difference, we think, to be safe. Um, very excited about band uniforms. Uh, this has been bubbling under, as, as me and Casey Kasem like to say, for about the last, um, three, four years. The band uniforms are very old. Uh, we got some great, um, quotes on this, and we, we were signed- We got some great quotes on this, and we, we were signed for them. It's actually gonna be about 20% cheaper than we thought. It's gonna come at $72,000 for the band uniforms. They have to be made to our specification, and I think that's on tonight's agenda for approval, that's gonna be great. Also, some people, over the years, have asked us about what are you doing as far as your green initiatives. I know in the last, in the last strategic plan we had five years ago, we had a green element. So, as maybe, I think this is gonna be part of the next strategic plan as it rolls out, we're going to submit an application to join Sustainable Jersey Schools. Now, you might know that Hillsborough Township, the municipal government, is a member of Sustainable Jersey. There's a separate component for schools, I think it's called Sustainable Jersey Schools, or something like that. We're gonna apply to the, and, and with that, you get some ideas, you work on some things, some different green projects, initiatives that we can do, that also makes, makes grant money available and other things. And you, it's the same old thing, you can kinda move up through, you gotta, you can become a bronze, you know, member, silver, gold, platinum, all the way up to the top. It's worthwhile, doesn't obligate us to do anything, but there's some opportunities there to do some good things with that. Two more things. The, we had an emergency repair on the HVAC compressors at the middle school and at Orton Road School. We're taking care of that, it's a replacement, actually. And one, the other thing I wanted to report at, because I, I received some questions in my personal time away from the dais here, about the, something I reported on months ago, and I just wanted to ask about it again and report on it again, and that is the busing of integrated students that participate with special education students in a pre-K program at Woods Road School. In some years past, we provided busing for those students for a fee. There were some problems with that, not, the least of which was that when those students were integrated into the busing system, it made the, some of the bus routes for students very long, up to an hour and 15 minutes, so we had some complaints about that. We have not provided busing in the past year. I know there's some parents that wanted us to provide busing for this year. We cannot go back to the other way we did it for $45 a month, because the routes were just too long. We, the only other alternative is to get some, is to do some busing just for those integrated students. Routes would also be long, they might also be an hour long, because it would be like having two, two buses, one for the east of Hillsborough, one for the west, to drive all over and bring those students to Woods Road. But not only would it be long, the cost for that would be upwards of $200 per month or more, depending on if we did not have a full subscription to that. If some parents did not wanna take it, and we didn't have a full bus, it could be even more. So, our, our decision remains on that, that we will not be able to offer busing to the integrated students that participate in the special education preschool tuition program. Of course, the students that are in that program as part of their schooling, of course, will continue to receive the busing that they've always received. Thank you.
There we go.
I'm all done. I'm finished, complete.
Great.
You forgot you were Acting President.
Yeah, really. Not true, but, okay, so that was a very interesting report. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the Operations Committee report?
We typically do have minutes that are generated, actually, we just met before this meeting, so that, that's why we're-
I was just reading off my handwritten scribbles.
Did a very nice job, too.
I just make one quick comment about the Woods Road School parking lot. That was only brought to the Attention Administration two weeks ago.
Which, which one? The Woods Road?
No, the hole in the, in the, in the parking lot.
I didn't, I didn't, I gotta report on that.
Arthur, you mentioned that, yeah. Well, anyway, they fixed it right away.
Oh, okay, so we have even a better, even a better one.
It was fixed right away.
It was off the agenda.
A parent contacted me, and I didn't understand whether or not if it was a field next door, which was the municipal property, or a parking lot, and I, I made the natural assumption at first, and then I thought, no.
At Wood Fern, Wood Fern.
Wood Fern.
Now, you, now I-
Yeah, and then it was the, it was the parking lot.
Yeah, it was the municipality.
Yeah, we fixed it.
It was the municipalities parking lot.
They did a nice job.
It was their parking lot, and they got it fixed right away.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yay.
Parents are happy.
Now, I, now I know what you're talking about, Wood Fern.
Kids aren't falling into the giant sinkhole.
Okay, good.
Okay. Now that we're totally connected-
Okay, education agenda.
Okay, I will turn the action agenda over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of education, to approve traveling-related expenses, to affirm the HIP determinations, to approve the three-year extension to the College of New Jersey Schools of Education Professional Development School Network Articulation, to approve the participation Ryder University Science Education Literacy Center NGSS Assessment Professional Learning for this year coming up, approve the teacher participation in the Workshop Model Institute 2.0, accept the NCLB award for the ESSA-NCLB for fiscal year 17, to approve staff being paid by the NCLB Title I Grant, to approve the application for fiscal year 17 IDEA, to approve the elementary NGSS STEM coach to be funded through Title II monies, to approve the affiliation agreement with Stockton University for internship practicum program and service learning, and to approve the affiliation agreement with Seton Hall University College of Education Human Services Department for, of professional psychology and family therapy, and approve the change of out-of-district placement.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second for the education agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments about anything on the education agenda?
No, easy.
Roll call.
Okay. Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafanti.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Duttah.
Yes.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Yes.
All right. Mrs. Haley and Mr. Kinst, not here. Motion passes.
Okay. And Human Resources.
Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve the resolution for the Superintendent Merrick's, the termination of a district staff member, the increment with holdings for this school year, resignations and retirements as listed, the revised terms for substitutes, three appointments for this year, payment for earning a doctoral degree adjustment, contract changes, transfers and changes in assignments, leaves of absences, appointments of staff members, turnkey trainers for this year, summer work, approve the extended school year program, an extra period coverage, seventh period coverage, unaffiliated staff salaries for both staff as well as administrators, and the summer enrichment program.
Okay. May I have a motion for items nine, one through nine, 20 in the Human Resources agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
All right. Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafanti.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Duttah.
Yes.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Yes.
All right. Mrs. Haley and Mr. Kinst are not here. Motion passes.
Thank you. And Operations.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of Operations, to approve line item transfers, monthly bills list, parent transportation con, contract, the, to award the joint transportation agreement with the ESC, to award the bids for the Hillsborough High School band uniforms, to approve the resolution for Facilities Project, which is the partial roof replacement as reported out of committee, and to approve the withdrawal from Capital Reserve to fund that project, to amend the 2016-2017 budget for Facilities Project. All of that is adjustments due to the partial roof replacement at Woods Road Elementary School, and finally, to award the bid for that, for that work.
Great. May I have a motion and second to approve the Operations Agenda items 10.1 through 10.9?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Do we have to read the resolution? We don't have to read it, right? We don't have to read out that resolution, right?
I can certainly read it out if you'd like to.
Do we have to?
But it's part of the record.
Okay. It's just a resolution to, to move $122,700 from Capital Reserve into our regular budget for this, for this expense of the roof.
Yep, it's just moving the monies from the savings account, from the Capital Reserve, into the operating expenses so that we can pay for the work.
Okay, may I have a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafanti.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Duttah.
Yes.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Yes.
Mrs. Haley, Mr. Kinst. Motion passes.
Okay. We're on a roll. We're up to comments from the Board and public in regard to old business.
I think it's a, I'm not sure, I think it's not really-
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, 16 Laurel Drive. At the last board meeting, which took place over a month ago, I requested the total sum of funding spent on preparing the high school for the governor's speech. More importantly, I encourage the Board to issue a statement clarifying its stance on school funding and the misperception being forced upon our district in the media as a result of the quote-unquote "fair funding formula." Both requests have been met with silence. While I expect that even if a sum were given, we would never know the true amount of dollars diverted from our schools and students. What troubles me more, though, is the silence of the Board with regards to school funding and the district's public image, a celebrated image that students and staff have worked tirelessly to uphold, but which sadly, as of late, has been overshadowed by the toxic proposal. Yet, the Board has remained silent, and that silence speaks volumes. Being that there was an apparent misunderstanding from the last meeting, let me once again be clear. I do not take issue with the visit of an elected official, but I am concerned with the misaligned priorities given voice through the use of budgetary funds for expenses of questionable merit. Were this situation to occur with any visit from any political party, I would still find myself standing here. We have funding for over $2 million in technology, another 12 grand on top of that for etching Hs in the tops of laptops that were not needed for at least another year or two, and a seemingly amorphous amount of money to prepare for a speech which has cast our district in an unfavorable light. The aforementioned sums aside, our students and staffs are faced with shrinking budgets to accomplish the very work that has distinguished Hillsborough Public Schools. What we did hear from the Board a few months ago, at the time that they were transitioning to a new healthcare plan that saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, were promises that the problems of past transitions would not be visited upon employees this time around. The Board and administration, not only in public but also in private, issued these promises. Members were assured that their concerns were unfounded. Yet, when the time of the actual transition arrived on July 1st, members found that they had been given erroneous or partial information at best. Members who required sustaining medications found delays, possibly missing doses, and were forced to spend hours navigating a flawed system that the Board, the brokers, and the administration promised would not occur with this transition. So while the Board saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, our members spent countless hours, suffered undue stress, and faced possible lapses in medications. While I acknowledge that a promise is simply that and speaks more to character and values, the money spent contracting and managing the transition does not. This is simply yet another example of funding spent on something of questionable merit. So let me once again be clear. I am not here to voice my concern related to a particular visit, whether it is the priorities expressed in the use of our budgetary funds that concerns me. Hillsborough Public Schools are among the best for a reason, a reason that has little to do with laptops and even less to do with rosebushes. No, it is the students and staff and community who have toiled and given voice to the district's accomplishments, yet it is the Board who remains silent. Thank you.
May I say a quick moment? I, I, Henry, I wish I would've known more of the details about the concerns. I have, I've been aware of one concern that, that was brought to my attention, and this is the first time that I'm hearing about multiple problems from, from the changeover to Etna, and you and I have worked very closely when those, when those problems arise, and they did with the state health benefits plan as well. So, I'm, I'm concerned that, that I'm hearing about it here from the dais in a public setting first, before having an opportunity, as I have enjoyed in the past, of attempting to either resolve or understand the scope of those issues. I can speak from a couple of experiences that had been brought to my attention that were actually on the positive side. So, I, I would appreciate, and, and we don't need to discuss this in, you know, in, in public, but the opportunity to have a conversation about specific issues as they come up.
Sure.
And healthcare is, is tough, because as, as the employer of the district, we are not privy, nor do we wish to be privy, to individual health-related issues of our employees or their family members. So, it's not necessarily the case that we would be made aware of particular issues. And it's through the work collaboratively between myself and you and the leadership of the HEA that, that it surfaces those, those issues. And there have been times when, when I expressed concern, including to you, about-
Sure.
-we needed, we were not happy with some of the things that, that were occurring with the state health benefits plan, and we needed to reach out and get some, get some things together, and take some extraordinary measures in order to, to move, to move that agenda forward to help our employees. So, you know, I, I suggest that to you so that we can sit down, we can talk about, about those details, because that is not my impression of the, of the switch to Etna, and if, and if my impression isn't accurate, I need to understand that. And, I'm sorry, to, to Horizon, I keep on calling it Etna, excuse me, but if that's, if that is, you know, if that's, if that's not accurate, I need to understand, and I'll, and I'll intervene.
Sure. And as you said, this is something that's somewhat sensitive, being that it is private information, and so members who have given us permission to speak on their behalf, I'm certainly happy to shed some light on that, but I think to that end is, is where the frustration stems from, because it behooves the employer and the broker to ensure that clear factual information is presented so that at the time of transition, the members are not faced with this.
Well, anything that is not factual, I need to understand. If there was a miscommunication, then that's something that I, I would take responsibility for, and we would make changes in the future to, to have that. But you're, you're making allegations that there was untruths or things that were inaccurate that were said, and I'm, I'm not aware of that. So I, I need to become aware of that so that that doesn't happen in the future, and, and that there certainly was no intent ever to, to do anything that would misinform-
Sure.
...our employees, but, but we should talk about that more.
Sure, absolutely.
Dr. Schiffer, and Henry, as a, can you, as a spouse of somebody who's gone through what that individual went through, it's a horrible situation, it takes a lot of effort and angst and emotional energy to get through it, and I understand from our point of view, or for, you know, you guys all understand, there's a, a wall between what you can and can't know.
Yep.
But certainly, there's gotta be some way you can get your, get some information from your members who are individually having these issues, and get the numbers of people, and get something straightened out.
And, and we have, and we have done that in the past.
Good, good. I know, I know, there was the woman that, that-
Uh, that's not even-
Had some issues, but-
Confidentially.
Confidentially, but I'm just saying, I know that you took care of it.
We don't even know anything.
But I'm sure that's not the only thing that's, anytime you switch over, anytime you renew, anytime you're involved in any kind of major drug purchase, it's extremely difficult. There's a coordination effort between the doctor's office, the insurance company, and the company that's providing the medication. And that coordination requires the insurer to sit and sit on everybody and make sure they're all doing their job. You're, and you're managing your medication process as a one-person show, and you're up against a major, major issue with all of them. The insurance company suck. Medical company sucks, and the, I mean, the pharmaceutical company, and the processing sucks, and they don't care, until you keep phoning them and phoning them, and that's what these people are going through.
Yeah, and we, we have certain levers that we can pull in order to expedite-
Then I hope we do it. Then I hope we do it.
...a process, and we have done that in the past, and we will, we will continue to do so. I just need to be made aware.
Sure. Thank you.
Sorry, Henry. My personal, I've lived this for years.
It sucks. Are you sure it's not on? No, no, you don't phone it, it's just, it's just information, it's just information.
Okay.